Good morning and welcome to the virtual meeting of the overview and scrutiny management board. My name's councillor Robert Parker and I'm the chairman of the board. Welcome to all members and offices in attendance today. The audio feed of this meeting is being broadcast by the county council's website. And I would also like to welcome members of the press and public who are listening to our meeting online today. Anyone invited to speak during today's meeting should unmute their microphone and switch on their camera. Could you turn off your camera and microphone when not taking part, not participating? Due to technical issues, we will today be conducting roll call voting for the minutes and the pre-decision scrutiny items, which are agenda items three, seven and eight on the agenda. The rest will be agreed by dissent using the chat function. If you wish to speak, please use the chat function and type speak as a comment. All officers and members are welcome to use the chat function. Requests to speak will be collated by the vice chairman councillor Ray Wootton. Nigel West, head of democratic services and statutory scrutiny officer, will indicate in the chat when a new item has begun. If you experience any IT issues during the meeting, please end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin the meeting using the link previously provided. If by any chance you do experience connectivity issues while speaking, please turn off your camera, as this may help. If you continue to experience IT issues, please contact Simon Firth, IT and Ginevos Systems. Can I also ask that members who are intending to leave the meeting or are returning to the meeting indicate using the chat function. Officers don't need to do so. Can we now move to the order of proceedings, please? Can I begin by asking Nick Harrison, democratic services officer, to confirm the presence of all members in attendance at the meeting?
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Adams.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Boquet.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Brockway.
Present.
Councillor Kendrick.
Present.
Councillor Macy.
Present.
Councillor Marfleet.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Newton.
Present.
Councillor Parker, I've got you. Councillor Pepper.
Present.
Councillor Strangle.
Present.
Councillor Ray Wootton.
Present.
Mrs Megan Machin.
Present.
Miss Saya. Councillor Hill. Councillor Hill. Councillor Young. I think that was a present. Councillor Bootroyd.
Present.
Councillor Whittington.
Present.
That's all. Thanks, Chair.
That's lovely. Thank you. Nearly a full house. Okay, if we could now move to the agenda that you've got before you. Can I begin by asking Nick to say whether we have any apologies for absence?
We've got one apology from the Reverend Philip Johnson.
Thank you. If we move to item two, declarations of councillors' interests. If any member would like to declare an interest, can you please indicate in the chat now by typing speak? Councillor Wootton, do we have any members who would like to declare an interest? Have you seen any?
Chairman, none received.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got no declarations of councillors' interests. If we then move to item three on the agenda, the minutes of the meeting of the last overview and scrutiny management board held on the 29th of October. Here we are asking to confirm, and I will sign the minutes of the meeting of the board as a true record. Can I, can we go through this page at a time? If anybody wants to raise anything, then please, please indicate. We start with page five. Silence means that you're accepting it. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. And page 12. Thank you. Do I have a proposal in second?
Yes, chairman. Have you proposed the minutes of the meeting?
Thank you, councillor Wootton.
Happy to second those, councillor Parker.
Thank you, councillor Macy. Okay. So. That's you, Nick.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Adams, are you for the minutes or against?
For.
Councillor Mrs Boquet.
I'll have to abstain because I was not present at the meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Brockway.
For.
Councillor Kendrick.
For.
Councillor Macy.
For.
Councillor Marfleet.
For.
Councillor Mrs Newton.
For.
Councillor Parker.
For.
Councillor Pepper.
For.
Councillor Strangle.
For.
Councillor Wootton.
For.
Councillor Mrs Machin.
For.
That's carried, chairman.
Thank you. Carry. If we now move to the next item on the agenda, which relates to announcements by the chair, executive councillors and chief officers, I'd like to begin with my own announcements. On behalf of the overview and scrutiny management board, I attended the meeting of the executive on the 3rd of November and presented the comments from the board on the transformation programme and smarter working programme. In relation to the transformation programme, I highlighted our comments about the involvement of OSM, the overview and scrutiny committees, and the use of individual councillors as sources of intelligence. The executive agreed that there should be more emphasis on the role of councillors as part of the programme, encompassing the one council approach, and officers confirmed this would be reflected in future reports. Councillor Ray Wootton and I met with officers on Monday of this week to discuss the future reporting arrangements for the transformation programme to the board. We agreed that an overview report would be provided to the January, and a progress report would be provided to the March meeting. Democratic services are currently looking into the alternative date for our March meeting to enable the board to conduct its usual business before the pre-election period, which is expected to start around the 27th of March. Okay, that's my, my announcements. If we now move to executive councillor announcements, are there any executive councillors' announcements from, first of all councillor Hill? Okay, councillor Whittington, Mark, are you able to say anything that you think that councillor would have wanted to say?
I would, I imagine the main issue, item obviously came out yesterday with the one year spending review. Myself, councillor Hill, had a meeting yesterday with Andrew Crocombe, Michelle Grady, Sue Maycock, and we just, and one of the items, we just went, went through the spend, spending review and discussed some of the likely impacts it's going to have on us. At the moment, obviously, the finance team are working their way through the, the full implications. I'm not sure if, if Andrew Crocombe would want to add further on that, but obviously, as we know, more things can be worked through into our financial plans going forward. Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Andrew, do you want to say anything briefly to tell us about the spending review?
Yes, happy to add to councillor Whittington's remarks, councillor Parker. So, yeah, the, the spending review highlighted some of the, some of the things that were trailed in the press beforehand already, things around the public sector pay freeze for next year. So that represents a variance to what we had in our, in our, in our financial plan, but also some more certainty on, on the types of funding that we're likely to be receiving next year. So there were specific announcements within there around roll forward and inflation on revenue support grants, support for, further support for COVID related funding into next year, and COVID related losses, losses on our council tax and business rates basis, which was positive news, but also as well slightly higher than anticipated referenda limits on council tax as well. So 2% for general expenditure and an extension of the adult social care precept, 3% for next year as well. So plenty there to work through. Naturally, we'll, as councillor Whittington said, we'll be working through the detail. We're still expecting, as, as has been normal in the last few years, not to receive the financial settlement until mid, mid December, just before Christmas, which will give us our precise figures. But, you know, all, all on track to be able to, to bring the reports through the democratic process in January as, as usual. But yeah, we'll, we need to see the detail first before understanding fully what the impact is on our, on our bottom line. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks, much appreciated. Councillor Young, have you got any announcements?
No, thank you very much.
Fine. Okay, can we, can we move on to the chief executive? Debbie, have you got any announcements that you want to make to us?
Thank you very much councillor Parker. Obviously, everybody is waiting to see which tier Lincolnshire will be put in post the national lockdown ending next week. We understand that the Secretary of State, Matt Hancock, will be making an announcement in the House late morning. I take that to be about 11 o'clock where the announcements will be made. And there will be a meeting this afternoon with chief executives and leaders across the regions, regional groupings, to discuss why authorities have been put into specific tiers. It isn't something that we are able to negotiate, it is something that we will be advised of. Obviously, if we hear during this meeting, we'll let members know, and obviously we'll send round a message as soon as possible, but the local authority leader or chief executive will not be advised before the announcement in the House, because I think they want everybody to be informed at the same, at the same time. Thank you councillor Parker.
We wait with bated breath. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on. James, James Dury, executive director, commercial, any, any announcements to make to us?
No, no announcements today, chairman. Thank you.
Okay, and Andrew, you've already had the contribution. Anything of a wider nature that you want to bring to our attention?
No, nothing further, councillor.
Okay, lovely, thank you. If we move to the next item on the agenda, which is item five, which is consideration of call-ins. Nick, are there any call-ins to consider?
None received, chairman.
Thank you. Item six is consideration of councillor calls for action. Again, Nick, have we received any councillor calls for action?
None received, chairman.
Thank you. Move now to item seven, which is the revenue budget monitoring report for quarter two. Pre-decision scrutiny prior to a decision by the executive on the 1st of December. So we're contributing to the debate about the outturn so far of quarter two, which will be reported to the executive. So can I ask Michelle Grady, assistant director of finance, to present the report? She's going to be supported by Dave Simpson, Pam Klipson, Keith Borland, Opal, okay?
Thank you very much, chairman. Good morning, everybody. And so we're asking you to consider two reports this morning. The first one is the revenue report, which gives our forecast position for the current year and shows our activity up to the end of September. The report's broken down and also gives a view of the COVID spend and some savings in there as well, gives a view of our financial resilience and progress on delivery savings and the development fund initiatives. Page 16 of your report shows a summary table of our financial position and our financial forecast, and you will see that we're currently forecasting an underspend of 1.9 million, which is the yellow figure saying total excluding schools. This is a positive movement of 5 million. As you'll be aware, on the quarter one report, we was actually forecasting an overspend on our service budgets of 3.5 million. So this is a, this is a positive movement, as we're now showing an underspend on our figure excluding schools. Some of the large movements from last year, I'll just highlight a couple of the, the large variances and movements from, from last time. And so children's social care, the overspend on this area is reduced by one and a half million. We're still forecasting an overspend on the specialist requirements on looked after children and cost of specialist placements of 1.9 million, but this is now being offset by additional grant utilisation and staff savings and COVID savings. And that's bringing the overall overspend on children's social care down significantly. And children's education, the overspend on home to school transport has reduced by just under half a million to a forecast overspend of 1.2 million for the year. On the place directorate, the overspend has reduced from quarter one by just over half a million. And the waste services, primarily mixed dry recycling contracts are forecasting an overspend of 1.8 million, but this is being offset by a new forecast underspend on transport services of just over a million pounds. And we have a new underspend that we're reporting on other budgets, a new forecast underspend of 2.5 million, which relates to our corporate redundancy budget and a few other pay contingency budgets that are forecasting to underspend now. What's excluded from those figures that we've reported previously is an expected underspend on capital financing of 7.8 million, which will be transferred to reserves at the end of the year to smooth out the cost of our capital programme. We're also showing a forecast overspend on the report of schools of 3.5 million, which relates to the high needs block and specialist provision around special educational needs. The section in the report covers particularly the financial impact of COVID. So page 18 summarises the key points around the financial impact of COVID. Each service directorate's also included some detail, which is included at appendix K and L in the report. Actual expenditure and losses, 231st of October, we're reporting as 22.9 million, and the forecast expenditure and losses for the year is currently around 40 million. This was our reporting figure ahead of the most recent spike. So again, we're keeping that continually under review. We've received to date 44.5 million of emergency COVID-19 grant from the government. We've also received additional support to cover losses of incomes through sales fees and charges. And we've received a number of specific grants as well to cover quite specific areas of cost. So, and some of the most recent announcements on those include winter support to children and families, notification of 2.2 million to come to us for that, and support to clinically extremely vulnerable group, and just under half a million, and the contained outbreak management fund of 6 million, which is also coming to us. And you'll also see in the report, which was a specific question asked by a scrutiny committee with the quarter one report, that we've identified that we've made or we're forecasting to make around 4.8 million pounds worth of savings on our business as usual activity, related to activity that's not been happening because of COVID. And that's all included in the forecast figures as well. So at that point, I will hand over, and as I say, my team are with me. If we've got any specific service questions that we can help with, or any other questions that we can help with.
I'm sure we have, because I'm sure that we've got a lot of chairs of committees, scrutiny committees here, and the way that the report is laid out, it does break it into children's services, et cetera. So because it's the current topic, COVID, can I just go back to the point you made on page 18, essentially where, where appendix K shows a forecast surplus of 7 million between expected expenditure and losses. So at one point, we were spending less than we were getting, but as you point out, the point is made that the rapidly changing situation. How, how would you assess the future in terms of likely income in relation to likely expenditure, given that we start off with a potential balance of 7.673 million?
So the government, as Andrew mentioned earlier, the government have announced support going into the new year for COVID as well. So, and we are expecting some costs to filter into the, for the new year. And in quarter three, we're, we're going to be looking at that and to see where we are. It's difficult to say at the moment, because obviously we're in the middle of some, some, some new costs. And I think the adult social care market particularly is, is struggling and needing our support. So quite a lot of costs going into that area at the moment. It seemed quite positive, that the government seems to be funding those areas where they know that there are particular pressures. They've also committed to supporting councils in the new year with areas of, our concerns for the new year are really around council tax and tax based losses. So where people are struggling to pay their local taxes and rates bills, and what impact that has on future years. But as part of the announcements yesterday, the government has committed to, to support those, those shortfalls. So it's, it's looking fairly okay, I think is probably the best way to describe it. It's, it's not, we're not, you know, over duly worried about the impact on our immediate finances. As I say, the longer term is more of a concern. But as, as I say, yesterday, yesterday, the government did announce some support to, to help with, with the future year, the future year, anyway.
Thank you. Thanks, Ron. Ray, who have you got on your list?
I've got no spigs at the moment.
Right. Well, can I just come back to this COVID issue? Because it seems from the LGA, they're saying that four out of five councillors, councils are being stretched at the moment, particularly in relation to children's services. Do we expect to, as a result of, should we say, a bit of a surge, quite a bit of a surge in parts of our county, that we will come under even, even greater pressure with children's services?
Well, you'll see from the report, we are, we're already forecasting some pressures on the children's social care subject. I think Debbie can read this straight there.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. It might be helpful to talk to the committee about what's happening operationally to look at those particular areas of high pressure. And the areas where we have been expecting and indeed have to a certain extent seen is around higher needs and requests for education, health and care plans because of children being off school for a significant amount of time, and also the pressure around children's social care in terms of, in terms of looked after children, and particular pressures with the lack of, lack of market really for children with complex needs in the independent sector. So we've looked at those two issues, and we are experiencing cost pressures in both of those issues as, as well as transport. But if I just focus on those two at the moment, and we have, within the transformation programme, you will see that there are two projects within the transformation programme, looking at how we transform our support around special educational needs, and also around how we better support children who are at risk of being looked after by the local authority. With regard to the special educational needs area of transformation, we're currently in the process, well, we have set up what we're calling a specialist advice hub, and this enables the SENCOs within schools to be able to access specialist advice early. And although, again, it's very early days, we are seeing that that hub is able to signpost schools to other services, rather than necessarily just coming in straight away and needing an education, health and care plan. And those other services, particularly the mental health support services, are better able to meet the children, the needs of children and young people. So although that transformation is at a very early stage, it's certainly demonstrated in some positive results. And then with regard to looked after children, we are looking at a value in care project, which will again better meet the needs and match the needs of children who are looked after with their foster placement, and also looking at investing in the development of specialist, very small residential homes. We've got some capital investment to enable us to do that, because we think that the more that we provide the services, rather than relying on the independent sector, the more local it is for children and young people, the better quality and the more cost effective. So they're just two of the transformation projects that are within the transformation programme that demonstrate what we're doing around trying to better manage the surge in activity in those areas. I, I think they are either on the work plan or have been to children, young people's scrutiny. I'm not too sure, councillor Kendrick may be able to confirm, but, but certainly I would expect the scrutiny committee to be cited or to have it scheduled in the forward plan to be aware of those projects.
Thank you. Rob, Rob Kendrick, can you, can you, any thoughts about the way that we're, we're looking at the budget for children's services and some of the impacts?
Thanks, Jack. I was just going to ask a question. One thing that has come up at children's scrutiny is home to school transport costs, particularly with COVID, and, and at one point, the possible sort of imposition, as it were, of regulations to the number of children that could be on, on a bus or a coach. And I think that was going to seriously impact on, on costs, because obviously there's a limited number of buses in the county that, that the council could access for, for transport purposes. And in fact, my question was going to, to Michelle was whether she can update us. I know we had a meeting recently, but any more comments as regards the home to school transport going forward, as to how it's looking over the coming months? And, and the other thing, it's, it's a perennial hobby horse of mine, I have to say, is cost of entry out of county. Again, where, where we have special needs that need to be dealt with or cared for out, out of county, that's an impact on budgets. And I don't know whether Michelle can add anything to what we've already heard in, in the committee. But thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Michelle.
Would you, would you like me to start and then Michelle can, can add to it as well? Thank you very much. So with regard to the out of county issue for special educational needs, absolutely, we want children to be educated as near as possible within their community. And so to that effect, the committee will know that we've got the building communities in terms of the special school capital programme, which is looking at investing in capital within the special schools, so that we create more spaces within Lincolnshire. The more that we can create and provide the spaces in county within our own schools, then obviously the more that we can manage the higher needs budget and the pressures on the higher needs budget on the revenue. So quite an extensive capital programme. The, the, the scheme is looking at a range of expanding existing schools, investing in new schools. I certainly know that the one in Boston is progressing very well. Grantham is progressing very well. And so that, that scheme will enable more children to receive their education in county to reduce the out of, out of county numbers, which is really positive. And again, I know that the committee is very well cited on, on that capital programme as well. With regard to home to school transport, there's, there's two issues really. So the first issue is the immediate pressure of COVID, so that when those buses are very full, we would look to put on an additional route to be able to mitigate the impact to enhance social distancing. Notwithstanding that, that obviously children are able to travel within their social bubble and within their school, and the guidance requires us to put on extra provision in extreme circumstances. So it is quite a complicated picture. We have received a grant to support the cost of home to school transport. At this moment in time, we anticipate that the grant will meet that pressure, although obviously the longer that it goes on for, we obviously don't yet know the totality of that figure. So as we move into next year, we don't know the position. But as we stand at the moment, the grant is meeting those costs. However, there is a wider issue with home to school transport, and the cost of home to school transport pre-COVID was increasing, and we expect it to increase even further because of the pressure that the market has been under. And we expect to see less competition post-COVID, if we ever get to that position. And therefore, we do. Um, and therefore we do think that there are some cost pressures in terms of home to school transport. So a third project within the transformation programme is actually very much to look at. Are we commissioning home to school transport correctly? Can we commission it in a different way? Can we look at better connecting to the concessionary fares, the wider transport network? Um, and so um that's one of the other projects that it is at its very early stages. We have just in the process of um establishing the scope to go out to tender to get some consultants who are logistics experts to help us on that. A sounding board has been established with councillor Bradwell as the portfolio holder for children's and councillor Richard Davies as the portfolio holder for transport, uh where we want to bring together the transport network and home to school transport to see if we can mitigate some of those costs which are escalating. So that's a third strand of the projects that's within the transformation programme. I don't know if Michelle, you've got anything to add?
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Debbie. Is that, is that okay, Rob?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's this big unknown quantity of how things go forward as regards um the impact of Covid. And as, as, as Debbie has said, you know, um the, the grant is um holding up at the moment. It's just hopefully things will improve in the new year and, and we won't have a, a pressure on, a cost pressure there that it can't be met out of the existing grant. So I, I hope, hopefully things will get better, as they say. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ray, anybody else indicated?
No, none, none at all, Chairman. Thank you.
Pulling the gap for the moment while other people have a think about it. Could I raise the question of waste? And the overspend, um which is on page thirty six, for factors it seems outside of our control. Um, that could, following um short term contracts. I, is there anything that can be done or was there anything that could be foreseen in relation to the forecast overspend of nearly two million pounds?
Uh, I think, well, I can ask Keith, uh Keith O'Leary on the call, and I think he could probably help with some of the detail on this. But I think that the, the kind of key factor in this was the um the contractor that was, was doing the work previously, obviously going into administration and us needing to, to find somebody else to do that quite quickly. So that, that has been the, the main factor, um I think in, in that, that issue. Um, if Keith's on the call, he can maybe give you a bit more detail about what the background of some of that overspend is other than, other than the, the contract.
But there is a question about, you know, how well do we judge um the capacity of contractors' survival when we let a contract in the first place?
Well, we do, we do do financial due diligence on, on uh contracts that are of significant value. So we, we do the financial checking, looking, making sure that they are um have got liquidity to, to manage the cash flow of, of the contract and that they've got, um, you know, sufficient trading records that suggest that they are suitable to, to contract with. Um, but clearly, uh we, we're looking at financial information that has some time lag on it. Um, and not always being able to see what the, what's in the bank of um companies through the year. So we, we get a snapshot of time at the end of their financial year, but not, not their operating activity during the year. Um, so we do what checks we can prior to, and that's part of our um requisite for, for pre qualification for, for contracting with us for those sort of size contracts. But some of these contracts have been gone on for, for quite some time. Um, and you, you know, financial positions of companies change, can change quite quickly.
Okay. Keith, anything, anything um that you'd like to add in relation to um some of the, some of the points that are being made?
I, I think in terms of the, the contract, it's a reflection of the market rate at the time the contract was let. Um, and market conditions, it's a very limited market with a number of, a very limited number of possible providers. So I think in terms of that contract letting process, it, it was the best deal that could be secured at that time. Uh, in terms of possible actions going forward to improve the situation, uh one of the key issues uh in the waste stream is the level of contamination in the recyclable material. So the contamination from um food waste and water, uh which degrades the market value of the recyclable material. Uh, and one of the things recently implemented or to, to be implemented is the separate cardboard, which is one of the more valuable materials in that recycler's stream. And by keeping it in separate collections, it avoids the contamination from food waste and, and the waste within the recyclables. Uh, so I think the, the waste stream going forward are looking to reduce that contamination and therefore reduce the processing costs uh of the waste stream.
Okay, thank you. Ray, anything else? Anybody coming up with?
Nothing at all, Chairman.
Okay, can I come back to um?
I think Debbie wanted to just add something.
Okay, fine. Debbie, of course. You're on mute.
Sorry, to try and get through a meeting without somebody saying that to me. Um, sorry, thank you very much. Um, so um Michelle and Keith are absolutely right. This is a really complex position because we need to work really closely with our district partners who collect the waste, um as well as then also disposing of the waste, hence the importance of the, of the waste partnership. Um, I have though asked Nicole, who's the um assistant director in charge of this, to um put together a forward plan around the sort of next three to five years about what the priorities are that we want to work on, uh what that would mean for the, for the budget in terms of cost pressures, in terms of invest to save. Um, and so that's at a very early stage, but clearly at some point that will go to scrutiny for scrutiny to look at what the profile would be in terms of measures to mitigate cost pressures um and um, uh, and, uh, and measures to look at invest to save. Um, I can't confirm the timeline of that yet, um but I hope that that would be in the early part of next year.
Thank you. Could I turn to an underspend, um which is in relation to other budgets? Which is about um an underspend of about half, one and a half million pounds, which is explained away by the low level of restructuring taking place across the council. I can understand the general argument about, um, we've got many other things to do than restructure. But at the same time, we are going through a transformation programme at the moment, the planning and out, outlining. So wha, what is it that's not happening that we expected to happen? It, um, and would have, if it had have happened, what would we have spent it on?
So the, it, this is the corporate redundancy budget. So um we've had this budget in place. It, it's part of our base budget um as part of our contingencies um for the, for a number of years now. Um, and obviously when we go through major restructures and things in the year, it's the cost of um redundancy costs and pension strain costs of people leaving the organisation that get charged to their. Um, and it's where we, we need to make savings. Um, and there's a corporate need to make savings, so we have a corporate budget to pick up those costs. Um, it, it's a base budget and clearly some years we don't have that kind of transformation as we, as we would have in other years. Um, and this, and this year has been one in case that we, we, we haven't been going through that process with, with many of the services in terms of restructuring and, and, and reshaping the way that the services are delivered. Um, as you've said, as part of transformation, um there, there might be some changes in the workforce, not really sure um what that might bring, but that's why we keep that base budget in place um to anticipate the costs of some of those transformation programmes, not, not being spent this year.
But we, so is it, is it almost a standard amount or is it? Um, the, the point I'm trying to, to, to better understand is that a transformation always involves savings?
Doesn't always involve savings, um but.
The predication of it, isn't it?
Well, the predication is about improving service that, that can involve savings as well. So you'd like to think that smarter ways of working would involve some savings, but it's about better service delivery as well. So, um, so it, it, and in, in any service change, there is likely to be some change in personnel and, and staffing. Um, and that budget is in place to, to support the costs of being able to do that.
Okay, fine. Um.
As, as I say, it will vary year to year about the amount of activity that goes on that, that draws on that budget. So that's, that's why we're forecasting an underspend this year, but it's, it's prudent to keep it at that level because there is, there's always an ongoing review of, of service provision and, and service improvement. So it's, it's prudent to keep it at that level.
Okay. Does it also expect that, is the calculation based on little or no activity taking place in restructuring in order to deliver um some savings between now, which is November, and, um, March?
It, the, the forecast is based on they're not expecting to be that, that, any activity that's going to draw down on that budget to the, to the degree that we're forecasting, yeah.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Can we move on to any, any of the um chairs of scrutiny committee who, who wants to pick up any items? I presume if nobody's put their hand up, but you know, adults, children's, Rob's spoken, um highways, et cetera. Final chance. This is the report that's going to go to the executive as our contribution to um the end, the quarter two report. If nothing, then we can mo, move on.
Chairman, councillor Marfleet.
Councillor Marfleet, thank you. You go.
Good morning, Chairman, and uh thank you. Um, we discussed our um, these figures yesterday in adult scrutiny. Um, all in all, I mean, without a shadow of a doubt, it's very impressive that we've uh maintained within budget, on target throughout this period. I know there's potential risk going forward, but to sit where we are, um, I think it's a great achievement. Um, it's a credit to the organisation and partners that have all sort of teamed together to get stuck in and sort of get through this in sort of most challenging times. And uh actually maintain sort of focus and budget. So all in all, I think it, it's, it's, it's fantastic news from adults anyway. And I think I just, we, we just thank everybody that's involved with adults and public health and our partners um for such an achievement. So.
Thank you. That's really positive. Adult care and community wellbeing, adult frailty, both are, are forecasting virtually um spot on the relationship between um the current budget and the forecast budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got two speakers now. I've got councillor Wendy Boquet and councillor Nigel Pepper.
Excellent. Wendy, first.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Um, obviously I'm the chair of environment and economy. Um, but also I'd like to follow on who goes to congratulate officers in this report because it is excellent report. Um, waste, obviously I cover on my um, um committee. Um, and yes, it has uh, uh, more, but I think uh because during Covid, I think we've all been at home. And unfortunately, we have created a lot more waste, certainly bottle banks I see in East Insey have been over topping, which um, you know, has created a lot of extra work for, for our East Insey um refuse collectors. Um, but moving forward with the waste, I don't think that we can um, um meet the challenges that's expected of us as a county if we don't spend more money. Obviously, the cardboard has got, we've got to learn to separate that differently. We've got the food waste. It's all exciting and I think that, that the challenges that we've got coming forward, I, I really do think that we are going to overcome and, and, and do what we always do in Lincolnshire and provide an excellent service as we do with adults and children's and everything else that we touch. So thank you and congratulations to all the officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Very positive. Nigel?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Nothing outstanding to report in the grand scheme of things from fire and rescue, in fact, from public protection as a whole. So um just to say I'm happy for it to proceed to the executive.
Lovely, thank you. Ray, any, any further speakers?
No, none at all, Chairman.
Thank you.
I think Debbie's just got something to add, Chairman.
Yeah, Debbie. Debbie, speak. Can you put your microphone on?
It's playing up. I keep pressing it and I think it calls off. So sorry about that. Um, so it was really just to um highlight something that children's scrutiny had asked for, that um members might want to consider. Um, I mean, thank you very much for the very kind comments um that um chairs of scrutiny committees have made about their relevant services. So I know that at the most recent children's scrutiny, they received a performance report. Um, and again, I think similar to what councillor Marfleet was saying, that they were very impressed with the high levels of performance, the high levels of, of budget management within very difficult circumstances. And I know that councillor Kendrick is in the process of writing to all children's services staff to um highlight the approval um and to note the appreciation of the committee. And I know that the children's services staff will really appreciate that. So that was just something that um if chairs of scrutiny wanted to think about, then um I'm happy to get the executive director to talk to them. Um, I just wanted to share something that was happening to see if you wanted to think about that.
That's a really good point. I don't know if the leader of the council has written to all, all staff on, on a general basis, but certainly um chairs of scrutiny particularly um could, could seriously consider whether or not they could put something um with the help of their executive directors. So that's something um for us all to consider.
That, that, thank you very much. Yes, councillor Martin Hill has written to staff.
Lovely. Okay, thank you. Um, so if we've got no more speakers, um can we move then to what we've got to agree? Um, we, we're invited to consider the report, determine whether we support the recommendation to the executive as set out in the report. Um, and, and that's a yes, no. And then secondly, agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive in relation to this item. A number of members have spoken on that. So the recommendation is that the executive notes a current position on the revenue budget and decides on any corrective action necessary. And the comments have been recorded by the senior scrutiny officers to be passed on. Could I have a proposal and second to support the recommendations?
Chairman, have you proposed?
Thank you. There was a number of people came in there. I think Jackie um managed to, yes, heard the voice heard. So it's moved by councillor Wootton and seconded by councillor Brockway. Um, we'll vote on this item now. You're voting on whether you support the recommendation of the executive and agree to provide additional comments. So o, over to you now.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Adams.
Four.
Councillor, Mrs. Boquet?
Four.
Councillor, Mrs. Brockway?
Four.
Councillor Kendrick?
Four.
Councillor Macy?
Four.
Councillor Marfleet?
Four.
Councillor, Mrs. Newton?
Four.
Councillor Parker?
Four.
Councillor Pepper?
Four.
Councillor Strangle?
Four.
Councillor Wootton?
Four.
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. The recommendations are supported and that message will be passed on to the executive um on Tuesday. Thank you. Can, can we now move to item eight, which is the equivalent report, but this time for capital budget? It's a monitoring report for quarter two, um pre-decision scrutiny, just like the last one. Um, and Michelle, back to you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And so just a quick um highlight really of this report again. Um, report going to exec on the first of December and it starts at page eighty five in your reports pack. Um, we're currently forecasting an underspend of five point four, two, four million on our capital programme, which is a lower end of spend position that we reported in quarter one. Um, we've had a look at the timing and the delivery of some of the programme all over the summer and been able to review our budgets and better phase the budget. So that's actually um re-faced some of the budgets in the programme, which has brought the underspend down considerably. And the underspend relates to block schemes um to the tune of uh seven hundred and sixty three thousand and projects um showing an underspend of four point six million. There's only a couple of key variances that I'm going to highlight um that are in this year's um forecast and which are two of the major road schemes. So the Lincoln Eastern Bypass, um it's actually forecasting an overs, uh, an underspend for this year. Um, but with a, sorry, an overspend for this year of one point eight million. Um, but with a forecast whole scheme overspend of eight point seven million, um which we will need to look at during the budget setting process. And also on Grantham Southern Relief Road, um currently showing an underspend in the current year of ten million, but with a whole scheme overspend forecast of eight point eight million. And the detail for the individual projects um programme are included in the appendices from ninety four. But happy to take any questions on individual items uh if the committee have got them.
That's fine. Thank you. Ray, have we got anybody wanting to speak?
Not at the moment, Chairman.
Okay. Could I raise the question um in relation to the two big road schemes? Um, both coming in at um, at an, an overspend of eight, eight, eight million pounds or so. Um, two things. One is relation to when are the projects likely to finish? It, and in the context of, um. It, and in the context of um wh- what analysis have we done to, to look at the, the reasons for, for the, for, for the overspends? Um, I, I say that because at the end of a contract, then we look back, I can't help but think about how we've managed that, that particular contract and how we started off and the changes that have taken place. So i- in a sense, it's about uh th- the analysis as much as it is about the overspend.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll start and, and maybe Keith can come in and, and add anything um where I'm missing things off. So um with the Lincoln Eastern Bypass, I think this is a scheme that's been um played out over quite a number of years and had quite a number of issues that maybe couldn't be foreseen, um which has impacted on the cost overall. So um obviously back to public inquiry, delaying things, um having to redesign some of the scheme um to more recent issues of uh Carillion um going bust and then flooding at the beginning of the year. And uh obviously Covid um all causing um issues, if you like, and, and some, some delays in, in the scheme, um which has uh added to the, to the forecast overspend. It's probably worth noting at the moment that the forecast is, is just, it's a forecast. Um, I'm not sure when the scheme's due to finish and Keith can probably come in and, and give some advice on that. Um. But obviously, there's still, still a number of unknowns when you're dealing with contractors and dealing with things like uh bad weather. Still, still a number of unknowns that you can build in risk for. Um, but but you know, it, it's, it's not always that easy to estimate what those risks might be. Um, Keith, do you want to just give an update on what the, what the finished timeframe is for the LEB?
Yeah, in terms of practical completion, it's still expected to complete this calendar year. Um, in, in terms of the financial completion, I think that will take some time after that and drift on into, to next year because of the um the, the number of issues to resolve still in terms of compensation events, uh claims for, for bad weather and, and such like.
So in terms of um Grantham Southern Relief Road, again, um this is a scheme that involves quite a number of parties in terms of um risk. Uh, so Highways England um traversing the East Coast Main Line with Network Rail. Um, and I, I think some of those uncertainties have caused the forecast overspend. Um, we're just into a position where they're looking to, to progress phase three. Again, Keith, can you give an update on, on what the, the timelines are for that expected now? Keith on mute.
So, so can you, can you make them to words? In, in terms of uh completion dates, I'm sorry, I don't have those to hand. Um, but phase three of uh Grantham's Relief Road is uh just adds to pre-contract engagements at the moment. Uh, so seeking a target price for uh the next phase of the contract. And in terms of the uh the delays and, and cost increases, they've been uh largely related to delays from the Covid pandemic, basically. Uh, those from third parties in terms of diverting power and uh water supplies, sewers and that sort of thing. So they're largely beyond control.
I think the other thing to mention there is that there are these third parties that we, we don't have any choice about dealing with. Um, so can almost hold you to ransom a little bit about um their timing and, and costs. So as, as Keith said, there's utilities, Network Rail, Highways England, all involved in that. So that, that does always create much more risk in, in the project than um it may be like.
Thank you. Um, the, what I was interested in from, is from a finance point of view, is not necessarily the, the amount. But the two or three things. The first is that I guess the forecast overspend has been increasing steadily. Or it may not. It may not be a, a linear curve going upwards. Because maybe we could, we make savings for some reason. But it'd be interesting to know, um in relation to these reports, when it comes to an overspend, the relationship with the past. Wh- what was the overspend the last time with quarter one? And for quarter four of the last financial year, to get some indication of what the overspend is relative to previous overspends. And secondly, I, I don't know if we've got in place a formal process at the end of a big contract. Um, that is the same time after time after time of a review um of reasons and lessons learned. Um, that perhaps you, you could help on both those. Could, could we have a quarter four, three, sorry, quarter one, one, two, three indication of um overspends relative to now? I think that's pretty easy. But whether or not we, as a county council, and it does, it isn't just about highways, it's about any project. Could we have a formal process in place to um review and consider and understand better uh lessons learned?
I, I don't think we have a formal review process in place in terms of the finances. Individual scrutiny committees might get information back on, on particular projects. And I'm sure Highways um committee are getting the information fed back on, on these major schemes as they progress. Um, a- and, and children's will do around schools, which are our two big main areas of capital spend. Um, in terms of the forecast, I can, I can tell you that the LEB and Grantham forecasts have been, that the forecasting a very similar amount in quarter one. I think the main difference has been from quarter four, which obviously would have been the impact of Covid. So um there were some concerns about the LEB forecast and I, I I don't know if you recall, chairman, but I think Andy Gutherson brought back a note to, to overview of scrutiny management board about the, the LEB forecast. Um, because there were some concerns about the impact of the bad weather um at the beginning of the year and what, what impact that would have. Um, I think it was, I think they was reassuring at the time that they didn't think it would cause overspends, but clearly there's been some um discussion with the contractors since then about compensation events and that's still being worked through from what I understand. Um, Andrew wants to add something there, so I'll let Andrew add something there.
Lovely. Andrew.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Yeah, just, just to add to what Michelle said and on, and in response to your question about the uh lessons learned. Um, you'll recall that in the capital strategy uh last February, that we've, we've set up an officer level um capital review group, which sort of aims to strengthen some of the governance uh matters around capital projects at officer level to then strengthen our reporting to, to you and executive um in terms of the public side of reporting. And I guess um you raise a very good point that lessons learnt from major projects were probably a good thing for that group to look at to enable us to better inform you on some of the lessons learned around those projects, not least given the fact, you know, um announcements yesterday around uh a potential new uh uh Southern Relief Road for Lincoln as, as an example, you know, but we we will continue to face these big projects which will require us to uh, you know, learn from the past, as you say. So um that's something for us to take away, I think, and maybe, maybe um strengthen some of the wording that we have in our capital strategy around that.
Yeah, and that's something we can discuss um on, on Tuesday with the executive, at least to go, to take their soundings as well. Fine. Anything else anybody wants to raise in relation to um quarter two of the capital budget monitoring report?
Chairman, I have councillor Angela Newton waiting to, to speak.
Lovely, councillor Newton. Sorry I kept you waiting.
That's all right. It's okay. Um, on page no eight, uh eighty nine, on uh one point two three and one point two four. Um, each paragraph is sort of ended by saying highways management are currently developing plans with the management for the, for this potential overspend from within the existing capital programme. So that's about the eastern of the Lincoln Eastern Bypass and the Grantham Relief Road. Does that, what effect does that mean that's going to have on the existing capital programme? On other, uh, other sites or, uh, plans that we might have had? Uh, is it going to knock them back or knock them out?
So that, that's currently been worked through at the moment and will be part of the uh budget proposals that come to scrutiny in January. So um when we set the budget for next year, we're going to have to look at rebalancing the programme. Um, looking at where we've got new pressures or new schemes that need to go in and what that means for the existing programme. It might mean that we've got existing planned spend that hasn't yet been committed, that we need to then uh review to, to make the whole programme affordable. But it, it is likely to impact on some other areas of the, of the capital programme. Um, to, to be able to do that, to make it a sustainable, affordable programme. But that, that will come through as part of the budget proposals for next year's budget.
Okay, someone's on the phone now.
Sorry, uh, um, if I could just come back, I just
Yeah, of course.
They're both, they're both huge amounts and um we talk about bad weather last winter. Well, I didn't think it was too bad, the weather last winter. Um, uh, uh, and so let's just hope it's no worse this year. Um, because else we need to start uh writing our contracts differently, don't we?
I, I think that the contract um relationship with the weather is something that's still being worked through and definitely being challenged. Um, there's contractors do build in um cost for uh, you know, their own risk around bad weather and things like that. So that's something that's being worked through. Um, it was particularly wet. We had quite a bit of flooding. You're in called a wave fleet um scenario at the beginning of the year. So we had quite a lot of flooding. Um, and I think that's, that's what's caused the problem with, with the LEB in particular. Um, but, but we, you, you know, it's a risk that, that, that there's an amount of risk built into these forecasts um for these large schemes, but not all of it can be anticipated maybe.
Certainly, we've given highways um and the overspend a, a, a good discussion. Anything else anybody wants to raise about anything else?
Sorry, chairman. Uh, councillor Adams, I've put my name in the chat box. I don't know whether it's got through.
Sorry, Bob, it's been cat waiting.
No, 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 no problem at all, Rob. Thank you for bringing me in. It's a question, it's a case of the, these highway projects again, uh in particular reference to the Grantham Southern Relief Road, chairman. Do we do a risk assessment uh in relation to funding coming from other developments? And I'm thinking particularly of the Southern Relief Road. Uh, funding is very much dependent on the uh homes being built, uh on the particularly Rectory Farm, particularly uh Spittlegate Heath and so on. Do, do we do actually, actually do a risk assessment if for whatever reason those don't go ahead in the timeframe that they're expected to go ahead? And I understand the relief road uh at Grantham is anticipated for completion sometime back end of twenty two, early parts of twenty three. Um, which is a long way ahead and there's a big gap there between uh the underspends of ten million now and the anticipated overspend of eight million. That's a gap of eighteen million pounds in a couple of ye- in, in over uh within a couple of years. But what, what is the risk assessment done on the impact of other developments not being completed in terms of it affecting the completion of particularly the uh relief road? Thank you, chairman.
Sure, thank you.
In terms, well, I, I, I'll start, see if anybody else can chip in if they need to. Um, so in terms of section one O six agreements. Um, clearly they are a very key factor and um very key to the purpose of the road being there in the first place. Um. We're reliant on developers working with the district councils to, to deliver planning around those. So we are you know, th- there is quite a risk in terms of timing of some of the contributions that we receive. Um, for that reason, we plan to forward fund the road and make sure it's sustainable and affordable within our remit of, of effectively borrowing upfront to fund the road. Um, in case of delays in section one O six contributions coming in. So so the risk is minimal in terms of our affordability. Um, but clearly there is an expectation that those section one O six contributions will be delivered. Um, but very much in the hands of the developers and planners around the timing of, of, of that. So, so we make sure that we um have affordability in our own revenue budgets to, to fund the road being built and through borrowing to, to overcome that risk. I don't know if that answers your questions, councillor Adams.
Gives a bit of comfort, Michelle, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, that's a, a step forward then. Okay, right. Right, anyone else?
No third speakers, chairman.
Okay, um, so we've had our discussion, pre-decision scrutiny prior to decision by the executive. Um, so wh- what we've got is um two, two proposals. One, to consider the attached report and to determine whether the board supports the recommendations the executive has set out in the report and agree any additional comments. Okay, um, so do we agree to note the position on the capital programme and decide on any corrective action necessary? And do we agree to pass on the comments of the board's discussion um to the executive? Can I have a proposal and a second please?
Who, chairman?
Thank you. Who was that? Sorry.
Right, I can't, Bob Adams, Rob.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Bob. Uh, the second please.
Yeah, happy to second that, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wooton. Okay, um. We vote on the, we vote on it now, voting on whether you support the recommendation and agree to provide the additional comments. So over to you now.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Adams.
Four.
Councillor, Mrs. Boquet.
Four.
Councillor, Mrs. Brockway.
Four.
Councillor Kendrick.
Four.
Councillor Macy.
Four.
Councillor Marfleet.
Four.
Councillor, Mrs. Newton.
Four.
Councillor Parker.
Four.
Councillor Pepper.
Four.
Councillor Strangle.
Four.
Councillor Wooton.
Four.
That's unanimous, chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll catch you the comments and I'll discuss these with the executive on Tuesday. Thank you. So if we move now to um item nine, Covid nineteen update, um a report from Dan Quinn, Assistant Director. Over to you, Dan.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Um, I have uh agenda item nine this morning, which is uh page one, two, five of your packs. Uh, my intention is just to uh give a overview of the report and then give you more up, up to date information. Uh, since this report has been published and then invite any questions at the end. So um, the, the intention of this report is to provide an overview of the work of officers within Lincolnshire County Council, but also the local resilience forum partners. Um. Members will recall um in August where I presented a paper to the board. Um, that uh in reference to the diagram on page one hundred and twenty six uh around that possibility that uh during the first phase of recovery um we may fall back into response. And on the twenty fourth of September, that decision was taken by the local resilience forum to transition from recovery into response. And we updated the board in October to that uh effect. Now, the key part of those decisions are the R rate and the, that is the rate of infection within the county. Um, recovery is still ongoing, um although a significant uh resource response is focused on uh the current challenges. The recovery is ongoing and Michelle Andrews will be leading the recovery partnership and the, the work that I've done from December twenty twenty one, uh sorry, twenty twenty, uh moving into the new year twenty twenty one. Um, but as you're all aware, there's been a significant increase in the disease nationally and also locally that we didn't see in the first phase. And on the fifth of November twenty twenty, the UK government decided uh that we should enter a second period of lockdown. Um, now, the whole purpose of that is to uh continue with that safety message around hands, face and space. Um, and the public health measures that we are implementing as and introducing as a mitigation to the transmission of uh Covid nineteen continue. They are mainly in the form of social distancing, distancing test and trace, the wearing of PPE, including face masks, um which we continue to push that message uh particularly hard around us not being complacent and recognising the increase in infection within the county. So moving on to the latest data on page one hundred and twenty seven. Uh, apologies, this is now two weeks out of date. Uh, but I have the data in front of me from yesterday's common operating picture, which is a snapshot produced for the local resilience forum by the multi-agents, uh multi-agency information cell. And the uh, starting with the total cases, uh were fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty three for yesterday. Uh, that was a hundred and eighteen increase on the day before. Um, and uh one thousand nine hundred and ninety on the week before that. Um, so if you reflect on um where we are in total positive cases, which is the table um identified on page one hundred and twenty eight, the, where it states eleven um identified on page one hundred and twenty-eight, the, where it states eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-seven. Uh, we, as of yesterday, are fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-three, which is an increase of three thousand four hundred and fifty-six positive cases uh since I produced the latest data in this report. Uh, the reason I labour that point is not to, to, to um kind of go over the figures, but just to kind of demonstrate to the board uh the significant increase in um activity that we're seeing in terms of the um infection within Lincolnshire. So it's really to provide that context for members that we have seen um a significant increase since the production of this data. Now, it's not all bad news. The rolling seven-day average of cases is two hundred and eighty-four per day for the last seven days. And we're seeing that as a, a, a reduction of thirty-three cases on yesterday's three, uh seven-day rolling average. And I think it's fair to say that um that Professor Ward, uh the director of public health, who is providing us his very professional opinion on, on the behavior of this uh of Covid nineteen. We are seeing a flattening of uh the curve and actually a decrease in numbers in some areas within Lincolnshire. Um, if I look at today's data, which has been produced, I think a couple of members were talking about it earlier. Um, the Nash, the uh, the county level um rate for today is two hundred and forty-one per hundred thousand, which is based against the national uh date, national average, two hundred and thirty per hundred thousand. So we're slightly above the national average. Uh, and there's three key areas that are still of area of concern, and that's East Lindsay with three thousand, sorry, three hundred and thirty-three per hundred thousand and Boston at four hundred and four per hundred thousand. And Lincoln, uh this data unfortunately is twenty-four hours old, uh but Lincoln sits at three hundred and twenty-six per hundred thousand. Um, so they're the, the kind of three key areas that we're focusing our efforts with district councillors and partners across the LRF. Um, some good news as well is that um in terms of universities, so the University of Lincoln had zero positive cases yesterday, although they do still continue to have six hundred and eighty-five students isolating. Um, and across the last seven days, they have forty-seven positive cases. So I appreciate there's a, a lot of data there that is um moved on significantly since the production of the report. Uh, but I think it's um showing a leveling off of infection uh within Lincolnshire, which we hope to see to continue uh over the coming days. Uh, in terms of the pet, the deaths table on page one hundred and twenty-eight, as of yesterday, um we had a total number of Lincolnshire Covid-related deaths uh reported within twenty-eight days of a positive Covid test at four hundred and eighty-five, which is an increase of fifteen um over since the previous day and an increase of seventy-two in the last seven days. So although we're seeing a flattening of the curve, flattening infection, we are still experiencing fatalities due to Covid nineteen, uh which we've seen. Uh, in a, in a hospital setting, uh we currently stand at two hundred and sixty-eight, which is an increase of twelve on the previous day and forty-six uh over the last seven days. Um, so that's kind of a snapshot of the data that we have. We also have numerous other data that we're using with the Make and Public Health colleagues. And I, I note and appreciate their support in pulling this data together. A lot of work going on by the teams. Um, some other interesting data for your information, um that we have one hundred and twenty-three education settings without breaks, but we have seen a reduction in the previous twenty-four hours of single cases within education settings, uh which is also positive. And I reflect again that uh positive news from University of Lincoln of zero positive cases. In terms of testing, um Lincolnshire Showground for the week uh from Tuesday the seventeenth to Monday the twenty-third of November conducted uh nearly three thousand tests uh well within its capacity. And local testing sites at Gainesborough, University of Lincoln, um were in excess of six hundred tests. And mobile testing sites at Grantham and Spalding completed almost a thousand tests for that period. Uh Chair, is it worth me pausing there for any questions on the data?
Sure. Right, anybody wants to kick off? Any indications, Ray?
None at the moment, Chairman.
Okay, little, uh, put the hands up.
Chair, Chairman, two have just come online, uh councillor Wendy Bocock and councillor Rob Kendrick.
Okay, Wendy and then Rob, okay?
Thank you councillor Parker. Um, hi Dan. Um, thank you for the support. Um, um, it's really uh informative. Um, as you know, I'm from East Lindsay, so we've had, uh, we've had a huge problem here. And I've been working with Michelle Howard, obviously, in my role of as district of housing and communities. And we have had a huge problem, especially with um caravans not being able to have anywhere to live. They haven't got a main address. So that's been our main challenge here. But um I know we have got a testing site here now, coming in the next couple of days, but um the testing sites, that is our problem, I feel here. We haven't had anything on the coast. Um, it's, it's a huge distance to travel when, when you're going on buses and you can't go on a bus if you've got a potential um case, if you feel ill and you, you think you've got Covid. Um, and I think that's been one of our major problems this side is, is getting tested and tested quickly. Um, but now I'm pleased to see the um, the data, the, the numbers are going down. And onto your bit of homelessness, that's just the bit that I just want to bring on page one hundred and thirty. Is anyone on the sentence? I don't quite like the idea of warming centres. Um, I don't know where that's come from, but if you can let me know after the meeting what, where that's come from and what it's all about. So, um, I'm passionate about homeless and rough sleeping and I'm helping to try and, with the districts to try and conquer this. We certainly are doing instead now, but I wouldn't want to see a lot of warming centres about, but we can talk about that after the meeting if you wish. It's uh something that you need to update on.
Yeah, that's uh, yeah, thank you councillor. That's something I'll take away and feed back into the tactical coordination group. And uh, because this is information that's gleaned from tactical level. Uh, so that will be through district partners as well updating us on that. So I can come back to you on that. That'd be absolutely fine.
Thank you. Over to you. Um, s- sorry, um, who's speaking now? Sorry, Rob. Yeah, Rob, thank you.
Uh, thank you Chairman. I, I noticed in the report there's reference to a change in the methodology of recording um uh Covid-related deaths. Um, it's, I've, I've always been a bit, a bit puzzled by, by, by this because I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, that um sadly, if people are recorded as, as um dying with Covid-related death, it means they could have a some underlying uh terminal condition, which uh also finds that they're tested Covid positive. Um, and that Covid is recorded on, on the death certificate. But I notice it says in the report, there's been a change in the methodology. Does, does that mean now there's been a separation from those people who are what you might call a, a sole Covid case and those who sadly have got an underlying condition and also have Covid. Uh, I'm not quite sure uh what that means.
So I think it, the, the, the point I was trying, hoping to, to make is clarity is, is to highlight the point that the, the previous way it was recorded, if you, if you remember back probably in June, July, we were in probably around the fifty, sixty thousand mark around fatalities. Um, central government and Public Health England and other colleagues within um the kind of Covid, Covid coronavirus response changed that methodology. So since then, um the, we, we did see an increase locally uh through that change in data. But there's been no recent damage. This is uh against that change previously, which are the thirty thirty-first of August. Uh, and I make uh that kind of reference to the government database in terms of deaths. Um, so the, the one that I get, the bit of data I gave you um around uh the total number of Lincolnshire Covid-related fatalities reported in twenty-eight days is reflective of that national data uh that could be found at that link. So hopefully that um clarifies that point, councillor.
Thank you. Okay, any, anybody else or should we co- continue then? Dan, do you want to continue after page one to eight?
No third speakers, Chairman.
Thank, thank you Chair. Um, so uh moving on to section three, which uh part of the request of this report, uh I mentioned earlier that we've moved from recovery to response. Um, so uh part of this report was uh to give board an overview of the activity that's being carried out in the response phase since the twenty-fourth of September. Um, and uh what I've tried to achieve here is just give you an overview of the structure, which can be found in appendix A and a flavour of some of the activity that's carried out in the cells. So this activity for, was from approximately two weeks ago. Um, and what I will endeavour to do is update you from this week's activity as well as we go through. So starting off with the uh multi-agency information cell, um members will be familiar with the report that was published in August. A lot of uh key data that the team pulled together uh either, either reflecting on the past few couple of weeks or on some occasions hoping to provide foresight to the partnership of Lincolnshire, making sure they have um a view of emerging trends and issues. So in terms of the work that's been carried out um this week by the Make, they continue to produce uh a foresight report, which if any of the members uh would request, would, would wish to have that shared with them, please let me know and I can uh forward that request to the multi-agency information cell. The reason I don't share it here is because obviously there is some sensitive information. One of the uh things they have highlighted this week is the comparison around neighbouring authorities as of the twentieth of November. Uh, so these figures are slightly outdated, but they give you uh context in terms of partners in the region and how they're getting on. So Hull are at five hundred and twelve per hundred thousand, North East Links at four hundred and fourteen, North Links three hundred and eighty-two, Leicestershire two nine two, Derbyshire two thirty, Notts two 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 and Norfolk a hundred and five. I appreciate I've rattled through those, but it's just to give you that context of where we are in the East Midlands and the data that I've shared with you previously. So moving on to the bottom of page one hundred and twenty-nine is around system coordination centre. For those who aren't familiar, this cell cooperates and coordinates local systems' response to Covid nineteen outbreaks. And they this week are focused on the clear increasing risk around the over sixty-fives uh in the areas that I've described earlier around East Lindsay and Boston. Um, and we've heard councillor earlier talking about those concerns um with that demographic. In addition, um the system coordination centre support local con- contact tracing um cases. Now, um the initial analysis or the initial uh proposal was to deal with uh contact tracing cases based on three hundred, uh about thirty per day. Um, but the, the system coordination centre receiving sixty to seventy per day, uh and this is over the weekend as well. So work is being done uh on resourcing with the possibility of increasing staff on the team uh and putting some extra work in place before uh the Christmas uh festive period begins. So um system coordination centre working hard to coordinate our local tracing efforts. Moving, moving forward on to health and social care, um within uh page three hundred and thirty. Uh, commission service cell and homelessness are two areas that I've highlighted. Uh, the commission service cell uh continue to work through the mitigation of staff absence within the home care se- sector. Um, and that's something they continue to focus on. And also we've, we've mentioned the homelessness uh issue that uh continues to be a focus with district partners uh who continue to, on a daily basis, to find accommodation for rough sleepers in uh bringing them in during the lockdown and the longer winter period. In addition to that, uh we see the change, um the, the, the change to uh the homelessness uh issues around um the moratorium of evictions will help minimize the homeless presentations for the coming few weeks. Uh, moving on to the vaccination cell, the vaccination rollout on page one hundred and thirty-one. Uh, very rapidly changing picture uh for the uh vaccination cell, which is uh kind of led and um who is led by the NHS in terms of uh providing that command and control and the LRF and partners across Lincolnshire leaning in to support the NHS where they can. Um, you will have seen from the news uh further information on Friday around some of the unsighted restrictions around the courageous Pfizer vaccination, where that has meant a change in the approach of the vaccination cell and how they roll out a roving model to support the vaccination work within Lincolnshire. But positive news is the further Oxford vaccine, vaccine that was announced last week and the efficacy data that shows if there's a half dose and a full dose uh that they achieve ninety percent efficacy, um which is really positive, given the uh the way that it needs to be stored, that vaccine. So we hope to see a rollout of that vaccine in late December, which is positive news. In terms, moving on to the bottom of page one hundred and thirty-one, in terms of the community and volunteer cell. Um, you can see that uh they are, still maintain a focus on the most vulnerable um and actively mobilizing volunteers and community groups to help Lincolnshire. This month, they've had a focus on the emergency food provision, volunteer coordination, uh supporting test and trace within the county and winter payments, which have previously been discussed. Moving on to page one hundred and thirty-two, mortality planning cell. Um, what uh the update there is uh good news. There ha- we have seen this week better capacity in hospital mo- uh mortaries over the last week, uh which has seen a reduction in the pressure in terms of mortality planning. Um, and it's worth noting that the webinar for funeral directors and crematoriums last week had a really positive um turnout and it was felt that it really helped in terms of comms and supporting that those, uh that sector within current Covid challenge. Um, just on to the top of page one hundred and thirty-three in terms of education, engagement and compliance cell. Um, as you'll all be aware, as I think Chief Exec mentions, we're waiting on uh the outcome of the tiered system. And I, I'm not, I'm not able to see the chat as I go through, but I can see things flashing up there. So hopefully uh we'll have time to understand that better. Uh, but in, in essence, um the compliance team are waiting on uh that output from statement from this morning, where they'll use that preparedness that they have uh, that have put in place to support that. Um, business economy, I will just cover warn and inform before I pause and hand over to Justin Brown, who will take us through the business and economy update before coming back to me and talking in further depth that exit strategy. But um in terms of warn and inform, um they continue to reiterate those messages of hands, face and space, working with the NHS around vaccination communications. And it is a really critical phase for warn and inform as a better and uh overwhelming amount of information comes out about the tiers. So Chair, I will pause there for any questions before handing over to Justin for a business and economy update.
Lovely. Thank, thank you for that, Dan. Um, we're looking at LRF activity and, and stu- stuff like essentially homelessness and vaccination. So pages one, two, nine to one, three, one. Have we got anybody who wants to speak, Ray?
Yes, councillor Jackie Brockway, Chairman.
Fine, Jackie.
Thank you very much Chairman. Oh, this is ever such a useful document. Thank you. Those are all the documents today, actually very good quality stuff. Um, I just wanted to mention uh that um I was reading some information about this, some background in reading, and there's concern about the way the supermarkets are effectively turning into super spreaders. Uh, that is the highest level of spreading according to the data I looked at, followed by um secondary schools and primary schools. Now, I think the stuff that we've got in place to mitigate spreading as far as possible is really good. But I also picked up another bit of data which I thought would be useful, which was encouragement for people to have their flu jabs as quickly as possible. Because with the Covid vaccine coming online, it seems that there's got to be a space of twenty-eight days between the two. And I wondered if it would be possible to check the accuracy of that information and if possible to get it out there. Because obviously, if that's right, and I think it is, then we need people to need their flu vaccines to get them so that they can then have their Covid vaccines as, as possible. Uh, but thank you very much for the very helpful way this is laid out. Thank you, Chairman.
Lovely. Thank you, Jackie. Any, any comments, um Dan?
Yes, um so if uh you refer to page one hundred and thirty-four uh within the warn and inform cell, I recognise that the councillor's concerns, they have been discussed at TCG, Tactical Tactical Coordination Group and SCG, Strategic Coordination Group. Bullet point three, vaccination communications is a large issue with media interest. It recognises that exact point, councillor, that we need clarity of information for the communities of Lincolnshire to fully understand the expectation. So picking up on the supermarkets, we recognise that the engagement and enforcement cell recognise the lack of adherence to the guidance and the social distancing. And there's been a big push within our warning and form cell to kind of push the message around the community's responsibility as well, to make sure that they maintain social distance. They use the kind of hand sanitiser when they go in. So we're pushing that message and we're working very closely with NHS communications to get that clear and consistent messaging out around the flu and the Covid vaccine, because it's all very confusing and changes on a daily basis. So we recognise that and the teams are working really hard to provide that clarity, although it is a challenge given the rapid nature of the emerging issues around vaccines and flu. So thank you. We do agree and recognise that as well.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Any other speakers, Ray?
None at all, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
So if I could hand over to Justin first and then come back to carry on with the rest of the paper.
Yep. So impact on the economy, Justin.
Okay, thank you councillor Parker and thank you Dan. So we attached an appendix to the report to give you some information, which we took to Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee earlier this week, partly about the impact on the economy and partly about the steps that we have taken and will be taking. So we have a business and economy working group. And one thing I would say is that it's really strengthened the relationship with Chamber of Commerce, Federation of Small Businesses, CBI and local government. That's been quite a positive outcome and something I hope we can build on into the future. If I can ask you to look at page one hundred and forty, there are a group there of five impacts on the economy of Covid as it stands at the moment. Rising unemployment and one of the things that we are particularly concerned about is that the number of people who are who had part-time jobs are people who have generally lost those jobs. And that is causing us a concern. The tightening labour market, so the number of jobs that are available remains at a reasonable level, but of course with more people applying for jobs and the jobs being spread across the whole of the county, that produces a challenge. And we see that as particularly a longer term challenge for young people who do not have qualifications. We're seeing reduced business investment. We're seeing that in terms of very, very practical examples of things like village shops being unable to fund prospect screens through to manufacturing businesses being unable to invest in their growth. So reducing business investment. And one of the things I think is important for the county council is that as we work with private sector partners, if they are unable to invest into future technology, future ways of working, then that affects our productivity. Digitisation has happened rapidly, if it's anything from committee meetings being delivered through teams through to entirely different ways of shopping, entirely different ways of working. And that's starting to create a little bit of a digital divide that we are concerned about. And we recognise that some areas will have a more significant impact than others. So all the analysis is showing us that coastal Lincolnshire in particular is at risk. But if you do see a handful of small numbers of redundancy in particular market towns, together they would have a significant impact. So we are seeing a number of emerging economic impacts. And the announcements from the Comprehensive Spending Review yesterday were suggesting that at best we will see the economy back to its pre-Covid situation in quarter four of twenty twenty-two. So quite a long term concern for us. In terms of activity so far on page one hundred and forty-one, we've provided a great deal of information for businesses and ourselves and the district councils have provided a heck of a lot of finance to help businesses to keep going, but also to invest in the future. And I think two things I'd reflect on, given that the tiers are being announced today. The first one is that we will have to step up overnight in terms of providing extra information to businesses about what the tier status means. And the second one is that there is a significant amount of work taking place with government officials asking us for real time information about what's happening within the economy, which is very valuable, but at the same time is a strain on the team. In terms of a midterm recovery plan, we've worked with the LEAP on a plan, which is described on page one hundred and forty-one, which sets out some big longer term priorities based very much around the county's strengths and around a long term investment plan that we hope the government can support us with. But we are also very clear, and I go back to the point I made about the short term and the Office of Budgetary Responsibility indicating that quarter four twenty twenty-two is when we would hope to get back to pre-Covid situation, that therefore there are some things we may need to do differently in terms of the economy. And those are described on page one hundred and forty-two. And we had a good discussion at the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee earlier this week. And really what we did was take each of the five issues that I've just described to you, rising unemployment, tightening labour market, reduced business investments, et cetera, and discussed ways that the council can adapt services to try and respond. And the discussion included things like additional work to promote self-employment, particularly amongst young people. It talked a lot about buy local systems and about seeing whether the public sector's procurement can be used to drive as much funding into local businesses as possible. It talked about working hard on ensuring that colleges and universities can provide as much digital learning as possible to all students. And it talked a lot about driving high street football. So those are things that we will take away from the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee and start to look at how we adapt our services and bid for funding to address. So those are the four things I wanted to cover, if that's useful councillor Parker. Quick overview of the impact, a quick overview of what we have been doing and what we expect to do over the next few days, that midterm plan, and then of course the point that really we've got a two-year window in which we need to be thinking very short term and providing some significant support to businesses, communities and individuals from an economic perspective. Thank you.
Really, really good. Yep. And I'm sure the Economics and Environment Committee benefited yesterday. Who wants to ask anything of Justin?
Chairman, I've got councillor Jackie Brockaway to speak.
Lovely, Jackie.
Sorry, no, no, Chairman. I spoke before. Thank you. I haven't put my hand up again. Thank you, sorry.
Anyone else, Ray?
No further speakers, Chairman.
Okay. Can I ask a question in the sense of knowing just a tiny bit about another subject area? Because I was on the Brexit Working Group, which you contributed to hugely. And I don't want to muddy the waters, as it were, but in terms of economic impact of Covid, I wonder to what extent as we move towards the thirty-first of December, some of these real challenges, rising unemployment, tightening labour, reduced business investment, rapid digitisation, localised impact, all of which are important. To what extent have we taken account of, or is this report neutral on the different sorts of Brexit that we could actually achieve? In other words, rising unemployment would go up more, it could be argued, with a no-deal Brexit. And I'm not making that point, but tightening labour market and rapid digitisation, if businesses aren't losing markets, then they're going to have less money for rapid digitisation, for example. So to what extent does the overlapping issue of December, the end of December, with both Covid and Brexit? Can you give us some indication of what you think on that?
Yeah, certainly. The analysis about the economy is based around that overlap, as you described, because we recognise that change will take place, whatever that change will look like. One of the main challenges that we have had in terms of Brexit and the economy is that the business community have found it extremely difficult to plan, mainly because they've been very preoccupied with Covid, but also because they are waiting to see what will happen. There was a survey done by one of the national business agencies recently, which suggested that only four percent of their members had a Brexit plan in place. So one of the things that we have been doing is trying to push hard on the Brexit transition support that we operate through the Growth Hub, which is our business advice service. We're nervous about the ability of businesses to plan and therefore we have commissioned a telephone line in which we will be pushing the message out to the right sectors, the right businesses, who we believe would benefit from our support. And we are monitoring the progress of that helpline on a weekly basis to ensure that it is helping us to get out to people. We do operate a weekly webinar on matters of Brexit and the government have funded three business advisers who are on the ground working on Brexit plans for the business community. So what we are focusing our effort on is trying to help to tackle the changes that will happen as a result of Brexit. But we have recognised in our economic modelling, as described in the paper, that Brexit is one of several issues which is affecting the overall economy at the moment.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. Anybody else want to ask anything of Justin?
Yeah, Chairman, I've got councillor Mark Whittington.
Lovely. Mark, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, but I've just received, all members I think have just received an email from councillor Hill. The tiering has just been announced. Lincolnshire, the whole of the county, is into tier three, which is the very high tier. So all of the tier three restrictions will apply once we emerge from the present national lockdown. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mark. It's not good news, is it? Certainly. Okay, so we're back to Dan. Thank you for that, Justin. It was really, really good.
Thank you, Justin. So yeah, mindful of the announcement that councillor Whittington has just shared. Item, well, section four, which is found on page one hundred and thirty-five, spoke when I drafted this, was kind of trying to visualise what the exit strategy would be post-lockdown. The Prime Minister's announcement to Parliament at the beginning of the week and now confirmation the whole county is in tier three is something we were working towards, planning towards, hoping that it wouldn't be the case, but preparing for the worst. So the Tactical Coordination Group have been reviewing their plans of what a tier three lockdown, a very high lockdown, looks for Lincolnshire. So partners will now continue to review their plans in the latest information around tier three. So not wishing to labour the point any further in terms of exit strategy. Does anyone have any questions on that before I move on to conclusion?
Ray, any indications? Anybody putting their hand up?
Not at all, Chairman.
I'll pause for a moment, just in case. No? Okay, Dan.
And I appreciate that's breaking news, but if I can assure members of the board that it's something that we did here within the LRF, within the strategic and tactical and partners across Lincolnshire, started to plan what a tier two or tier three would look like for us. So now we have that assurance of we're entering tier three from the second of December. That will allow us to firm up those plans and communicate not only with yourselves, but the rest of Lincolnshire. So just in terms of the conclusion, I think I've said previously when talking to the board, it's a fine balance, our continued response between the health and the kind of health of Covid nineteen and to protect our communities whilst responding to a wide range of challenges from across the county. And that is also in recognising any concurrent incidents that may happen. Reflecting on councillor Parker's question around Brexit, it's a consideration as a concurrent incident whilst we manage Covid, but also a flooding or some of the kind of severe weather event is something we give consideration to on how we'd manage it. My final point is just to reflect on the paper. Chair, I feel like the paper is almost a disservice to the board because by the time it's published, and we've seen by my update today, it's almost two weeks out of date. So I don't know whether there's a conversation about a verbal update for future meetings that would be more accurate. I know officers are keen to engage with members, keen to engage with the board, but provide up-to-date information in a rapidly changing environment, maybe of more use for the next couple of meetings. So I'm happy to take. Any questions?
Yep. Questions? Any questions coming up, Ray?
None at all, Chairman.
Okay. Well, there's two things. The first thing, and it's pretty important, given that this is Dan's last meeting, can I just, on behalf of the board, thank you most sincerely for your work as Assistant Director of Corporate Recovery. The reports that we received since Covid nineteen hit Lincolnshire and the rest of the country and the world have been exemplary. And I know that you've relied on support from a lot of colleagues, but having brought it all together in the papers that you presented, I wanted to thank you and wish you well for the future. I also want to ask, well, pass on, Michelle Andrews is in attendance, will be taking over Dan's role when you leave next week. But thank you, Dan. And Michelle, that's the act that you've got to follow, as simple as that. I do think that it's a really relevant point about Dan and verbal updates. So a report that sets out in broad terms a structure, it seems to me, about the important areas to be covered, to which you could then tell us about on an up-to-date basis, as opposed to a two-week basis, particularly because we're going to be in tier three. So what we've got to do as a board is to consider the reports and provide feedback, which we've done. And secondly, agree a future reporting requirement back to OSMB to monitor progress. Given the fact that we're in the highest level possible, it just seems to me that we need to have reports every month to keep up to date. The process that Dan set out seems to me to be one that reduces the time it takes to write the very detailed reports. So if you could think of a structure very similar, where we can have updates in relation to each of the important key areas, that would be good. Okay.
Yes, I think the key areas would be the data to give you up-to-date figures, which I've worked on this morning, and an up-to-date overview of what the cell activity, the key activity is, whether that be vaccination, warning and form, just to give members a feel that we've got grip on the incident and any information that they might want, we can provide after the meeting if it's specific to their areas.
Yep. And I think some sense of history. When I say history, I mean capturing each time, not just where we are at the moment, but where we've been. Because it seems so long ago, going back to March, that we don't have an indication of how far we've come in a in in a the progression of the Covid, but also what we've done in terms of an expand. So that's that that seems a good way forward. So what we're asking members to do is to agree that future reporting requirements that Dan set out, so that we can monitor the progress of the council's recovery. So I'm asking us to indicate whether or not we agree with that proposal, that we've considered and reported and provided feedback on the points, and we've agreed future reporting requirements into OSMB on a monthly basis. Is that agreed? Can people, members of the committee, indicate? Anybody dissenting? No? Okay, if if that's the case, then that's that's agreed on behalf of the board. And thank you again, Dan.
Thank you, everyone. Take care.
Okay, thank you. And we move to the final substantive item, which is item ten, Treasury Management Performance for the quarter two to the thirtieth of September. As usual, Karen Tong, Treasury Manager, will present the report, supported by Michelle Grady, Assistant Director. Karen, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and hello, everybody. I don't know if you hear me. My screen's gone a bit weird, but I'll proceed on the basis that you can. Good, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to present my Treasury Management Performance Update Report for Quarter Two to the thirtieth of September. This starts on page one five three of your pack. To the an activity to the Treasury Management Strategy that was set and approved in March, as usual. And as usual, I just areas of my of the report. The the detail that I'll be talking about is is all in the appendices to the report that you can look at. So starting with the interest rates and the economy. The strategy in March, we were forecasting short-term and long-term rates to moderately rise by no more than point two five in in this and and by no more than one per cent in the next three years. This this forecast was set before the impacts of the Covid nineteen pandemic and it was also set assuming that an agreed deal on Brexit withdrawal would would happen. So if I can refer you to the graph on page one five nine in Appendix A, you'll see what's actually happened to short-term and long-term rates over the period in question, and you can see that they've remained fairly flat in all areas, having been both been cut first in in late March. The Bank of England is not expected to move base rate for considerable time. You can see that in the forecasts from Link, our Treasury advisers, on the bottom of that page, that that base rate is is predicted to be remain at point one till March twenty twenty-three, so, you know, considerable length, as as the impacts of the economy play out from Covid. Just just mention again that we're not expecting to see negative interest rates. They've been ruled out for the time being. I think the government is going to tackle monetary policy by quantitative easing, rather than turning rates negative. That's our latest forecast. And you can also see that there's little movement in long-term rates from that forecast. And again, these are these are being kept low due to increased quantitative easing, which increases demand and reduces yield for borrowing. So turning to the economy, we we saw a small recovery as as the sort of lockdown restrictions were eased, first lockdown. These figures sort of so bounced back slightly in all areas. And since that easing of lockdown, obviously, we've had some good news and some bad news. We've entered the second national lockdown, obviously. But we've also seen some positive news on the vaccine front. So to to bring you up to date, really, with the current position, I'll just emphasise what was what was said by the Chancellor yesterday in the spending review, the latest predictions. He saw that the economy is set to contract by eleven point three per cent. This is not as bad as first thought, but eleven point three per cent in twenty twenty. Still the largest fall for more than three years. He's forecasting the economy to grow again by five point five per cent next year, six point six the year after. But that that really, you know, means that the output's not not expected to return to pre-crisis levels until the end of twenty twenty-two. And then we're just back where we started. This was twenty twenty-three, so it's a bit more positive news, but but still. And that doesn't take into account the forecast of growth that we did have. That that just takes us back to where we were. Unemployment is the is the main concern, obviously, and they're expecting that to reach seven point five per cent next spring, with two a forecast two point six million people out of work. And and that's that's after, you know, the measures that they're introducing to tackle and help that unemployment. So that that's grim news. And the government borrowing forecast is set to hit three hundred and ninety-four billion this year, equivalent to nineteen per cent of GDP. Albeit, that borrowing is is they're being able to borrow very, very cheaply. That's still huge numbers. UK debt is ninety-one point nine per cent of GDP this year, predicted to be ninety-seven point five per cent of GDP by twenty-five, twenty-six. I'll just I'll just briefly many many mention Brexit. Link, Link are now estimating a thirty per cent chance of the transition period ending without a deal or extension. It was forty per cent last time I commented to you on that. So slightly improved. And and the figures I've got to emphasise what Justin said earlier on on the impact of Brexit is various commentators have mentioned that they, if we don't have a deal, then then we're likely to, that's likely to slow the recovery of those figures I've just mentioned by sort of one to three per cent fall. So it's difficult to predict because although Covid has limited the impact of trade across the world and so forth, as Justin said, I don't think it happens out there either. So it's it's hard to predict, but but one to three per cent fall in addition is what I've been told. So moving on to investments. The strategy, as you know, we we keep investments a low-risk priority. Liquidity and yield in that order concentrated on. We have minimum long-term ratings of A to this. And in the strategy, I to all periods up to two years to suit the direction of interest rates. So you'd be able to see in Appendix B on page one six three. It shows that the investment balance stood at just under three hundred and forty-two million, whilst the return of point six six on these investments has continued to exceed the benchmark returns quite significantly. And and this is being achieved by having a slightly longer weighted average maturity of investments over one hundred and twenty-four days. I'll just point that out there, but the return is falling as as the year progresses, and you can see this on on the graph on the left on on that appendix. So, you know, the the return you can see is a falling line, whilst at the same time the investment balances are increasing, which is the bar graph. As we're continuing to secure funding from the government to tackle Covid, which has yet to leave and be expended. And a double whammy really is that these balances, increased balances are having to be kept fairly liquid due to the uncertainty of when of the cash flow and when they'll be needed, and those liquid investments are at the lowest return. So you can see that the return is falling today. Today, just to give you an idea, today's return is actually point three nine now compared to point six six at the end of September. And investments peaked last week at four hundred and twelve million, which is the the highest we've ever had in in terms of level investments. So that gives you an idea of what's happening there. And and the likelihood, like you say, that the the return on these investments is going to stay very low for a considerable period of time is is the forecast. There've been no changes to the annual investment strategy during the period and no breaches of lending limits. An Appendix D, which can be found on page one seven three, shows that the full shows the full list of investments at thirtieth of September. And it does show, point out, that the the proportion of lending to councils has gone up significantly this year. And then this is really due to the banking sector really not in the market at the moment, due to getting their funding elsewhere, central governments and things through this period. Locals have stepped up and and the the lending to local to local market has has taken off quite significantly. That could be seen on on the appendix by the dark yellow section segment. I just thought I'd point that out as something that's happening this year. Moving on to borrowing then, at the start of the year, external borrowing was just over five hundred million and with a cost of three point seven per cent. And the new and the borrowing requirement set for twenty twenty-one was one hundred and thirty-seven point nine million. And my strategy for borrowing was to take any new borrowing with the aim to reduce that cost of debt, if possible, whilst ensuring an even debt maturing profile. Internal borrowing was to be maintained around fifteen per cent, which equates to roughly about one hundred and twenty-three million. That was the plan. If you turn to page one eight one, Appendix E shows that this borrowing requirement has has been reduced quite significantly and due to carryforwards, rephasing of capital programme, estimated underspends, and also an increased allowance for internal borrowing. And so it's been reduced to twenty-one million, just just under twenty-one million from that original one hundred and thirty-seven. Internal borrowing has been increased to around twenty per cent, which equates to roughly about one hundred and sixty million in an attempt to keep the cash balance reduced. Because this 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 is twofold really. It reduces counterparty risk of lending investments and also reduces the borrowing interest cost. So there's two benefits there of doing that. It's a bit of akin to a mortgage, where if you're if you're not earning any any interest on your cash, but you're you're still paying higher for your mortgage, then the sensible thing to do is to pay off your mortgage with with the cash that's not earning you anything, and then it's it's an analogy to put this. So that's what we're we're trying to do here. And and as as Michelle mentioned earlier on in in the in the day, that is having an impact on capital financing charges, where where those are reducing in underspend. So the the appendix also shows that we haven't taken any external borrowing yet this year. And this was because long-term rates were forecast to not move. And also, we were waiting for the response from the PWB, the government, on PWB consultation, where there was a hint that they were going to reduce rates. So we haven't we haven't taken anything, any of that twenty million yet. But af- after that, it's estimated that long-term billing, long-term borrowing balance will end the year now at five hundred and seven point nine million instead of the six hundred and eighteen that was in the strategy. And just one final thing, as as in previous years, we've done some temporary borrowing in in the market, just just to cover liquidity in certain periods later on in the year to cover shortfalls. This is usual practice, and it's 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 more beneficial than than taking recalling investment call accounts and so forth. So we've started doing a bit of that. And no debt reshedering has been undertaken or any prudential limits breached in the period either. Before before I end, I just want to finish with a couple of issues that have arisen in the last couple of weeks, that's not in the report. Firstly, you may have heard that London Borough of Croydon issued a section one one four notice last week. We do have an investment exposure to London Borough of Croydon of five million pounds. That's due to mature in August next year. So I really just wanted to put members at ease and give them assurance really that we don't we don't see that as a concern for non-repayment of that loan. This isn't a credit risk at all, really. The councils are on our lending list with the lowest risk levels, which means they've got the highest limits. And section one one four does not mean that a council is going bankrupt or unable to pay its it means that it's unable to set a balanced budget for the year, which is is going to take measures to try and do that. And part of those measures is to restrict expenditure essential, and what's classed as essential is repaying their debt. So but there's no concern about non-repayment. It's more reputational risk, really. And Link has also given that assurance that they they don't expect that to happen, and they still expect councils to be on the lending list with with the lowest risk possible. And the second second thing is was announced yesterday. I mentioned the result of that PWB consultation was announced with the spending review yesterday. And the result is that the PWB will no longer lend to councils who have undertaken any commercial activity investment purely for return and or have or have an intention of doing that in the next three years. So they're restricting their lending to to councils who have done that or are planning to do it. And also, they will be reducing interest rates back down by one per cent again. You might recall that they increased interest rates across the board last October, sorry, October nineteen, by one per cent, and and now they're taking that increase away. And and that is effective today for any councils that haven't got any of that commercial activity. So that's good news for for Lincolnshire, really, because we we waited to do any borrowing based on whether they would do that or not, which they have. It it means that rates now, the day of fifty for fifty-year borrowing, is just one and a half per cent. Historically, low levels now. It's never been that low before, I don't think. So when we want to take a borrowing, then it will be cheap to do so. But that's that's really all I've got to say. So welcome. Any questions? Anything has? Thank you.
Great, thorough report. Thank you. Ray, any any? People put in forward to speak?
Not at this time, Chairman.
Okay. Can I just ask, the the list, which I've never looked at in detail before, of local authorities that we're lending money to, albeit on a short-term basis, is quite considerable. In fact, some local authorities, I think Corby's one of them, has come back for second dibs, as it were, asking for his a second tranche of money. So what, how much has this increased from what, let's say, usually was, to about twenty-eight or twenty-nine, I counted them quickly, local councils that are borrowing money from us?
Yeah, it it has increased significantly in the in the last year. To give you an example, that the latest MHCLG figures for local-to-local lending to each other was eleven billion uh was eleven billion pounds uh at March twenty, uh and the previous March, it was nine billion. Um so so it has increased significantly. Um and it's due really to uh the banking sector market really collapse. Need to uh offer any yields uh for any any money in the market, so they're they're offering very low yields. Uh and the councils have stepped up. They um they want to continue to borrow uh and lend for their plans, so um they they've they've continued to offer, you know, market yields, so. Um and and it's become more prevalent uh in the last year due due to due to um Covid measures, really, and the impact of of Covid in the artificial market. So, yes, it it's increased. We we've got we've got about a hundred and seventy million. Um if you look at the the list uh of lending to locals at um uh a a week ago, I think, a hundred and seventy million and uh thirty million committed for future lending, so it represents about fifty percent of our total portfolio now.
Okay. Can I just ask, you 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 partly answered it by mentioning thirty million spare, as it were. The wh- what is the um underlying principle as to how much we're prepared to lend?
Uh well, uh how much we're prepared to lend to each counterparty is is all driven by
Sorry, no, in total.
Oh, in total. Um it what, just to locals, do you mean, or or in general?
Okay, both, but you said the hundred and seventy million committed, thirty million available. Okay. Wh- where does that thirty million come from?
No, that that thirty million is is not available. It's it's um it's pre-committed uh forward lending, as it were.
Okay.
Point in time, I've got a hundred and seventy million lent uh with another thirty promised uh at a future date. The lent uh to to locals, so that's what I meant by that. Uh but but the actual total lending is driven by cash flows. Um I I have to, I I I don't leave any uh lend, you know, cash in the bank. Uh it gets lent out somewhere um uh to diversify and and sort of thing, and so that's driven by the cash flow level.
Okay.
Hence, we've got a large amount of cash, and and then who I lend it to and at what limit is driven by the annual investment strategy, where we set our limits for each counterparty. And and the limits for locals uh are twenty million per local for the maximum of two years, so that that's the limit I've got for each local uh that determines, you know, uh who who and when we we lend to them.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions, Ray?
Yes, Chairman Andrew wants to come in to provide further details on Croydon, and also I've got councillor Mark Whittington, who needs to speak.
Okeydoke. Andrew and then Mark, yep.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it was only just a general question, just to provide some extra background to what's happening for Croydon, if it was was of interest to members, really, and Karen has covered some of it. So I think from a financial or a finance professional's perspective, and, you know, she's somebody who 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 has that similar responsibility as well here as section one five one officer. The uh what's going on down there is is the system's working, uh is in terms of what what the the intention of um, you know, members of Parliament when they laid those uh regulations down in in nineteen eighty eight was that, you know, if if it was felt that um a a council couldn't balance its budget in any particular year or period, that that it was giving the ability to the section one five one officer to to levy that section one one four one one four notice. As Karen says, um there's the misconception in uh uh, you know, in the trade press, that that is the almost like the white flag of 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 bankruptcy, but that's not the case. That's this is specifically a piece of legislation to stop that happening and to, you know, technically, a local government body cannot go bankrupt because of of that particular leg- legislation. So what's happening down there at the moment is um they're in they're in that twenty one day period at the moment where there there is the consideration of that section one one four notice. Um as Karen said, um uh fixed fixed um commitments continue to be to be met. And uh, you know, interest forms a part of that, but the um the councils uh cabinet met last night to look at their financial recovery plan uh before it going to count their council meeting next Tuesday, the first of December. Um you'll have seen possibly in the press that they've applied to the government for a capitaliser capitalisation directive, which um is something similar to what happened to stabilise Northamptonshire. Um, you know, the the both the MHLS MHCLG and SIPR have come out in support of the notice as a way of resolving uh Croydon's current challenges. Um so at some point in in the future, obviously, there's a couple of scenarios here. Uh the government will provide that um that directive, at which point the the council can prove that they can rebalance their budget again over a three year period, which is what what they're looking at. At which point the section one one four notice would would drop and, you know, uh they'd return to normal, normal, normal sources within that revised budget strategy. Um I hope hopefully that context is useful for members, but uh to reiterate what Ca- Karen said, the whole purpose of this is to enable them to continue being able to meet those those fixed term commitments with which um interest to us uh is included within that.
Thank you for that. Right. Sorry, can you remind me again, Ray?
Yes, councillor Mark Whittington.
Thank you. Mark, sorry, I forgot.
It's okay. Uh thanks, 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 councillor Parker. Just just a bit more in in information around this. Um uh it it about, I think it's about ten days or four nights ago, when it when when the the situation at Croydon became clear. Um and that, you know, we had loaned them uh five million pounds in May of this year on a twelve month deal. Uh councillor Hill um asked me, and and I had I had a meeting with uh Michelle Grady, Sue Maycock and Tarrantong, and we discussed uh not only our ex- potential exposure to Croydon, but also our potential exposure to other local authorities. And I think as Karen has has laid out, you know, lending to um local authorities is 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 sort of a normal business, really. It's it's what local authorities do, and 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 normally is is to help local authorities who who potentially have got short term cash flow issues to actually um manage and support their 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 particular cash flow. On the back of that, um uh I asked um so so about councillor Hill that um going forward, um I I I um Ca- Ca- Karen prepared a report detailing our full exposure to local authority lending, um you know, amounts, amounts, amounts we've lent out, uh and councillor Hill has asked me to sort of uh include this now within my sort of responsibilities as a support councillor, so I'll be uh aiming quite frequently now with the team um around our exposure to local uh authorities. Thanks, uh Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Great. That's really reassuring to know that you're looking at it a- as well as Karen. Okay. Anyone else that wants to speak?
No further. Shh, Chairman.
Okay. So, what action required, the report is noted and any comments to be passed to the executive councillor for resources and communications. So um firstly, I guess Nick has um noted any comments. Um and secondly, do we agree to note the report and that comments be passed on to the executive councillor for resources? Can can everybody indicate, please, in favour of that proposal? Any dissensions? No? Okay, then. That that means that the report is noted um and and agreed. That's the main substantive item, the the end of substantive items, items for information only. But um you you'll notice um that future meetings after um the December one are pretty crowded, January and February in in particular. Um we will have to have a discussion as to whether or not it's potentially likely that we will have to meet in the afternoon, but um I I want to avoid that, if at all possible, because of um district council um commitments, but we we have got a busy period um after the next meeting up up until um we finish in March. Um is anything you want to add, Nigel, to um the and and comment on the future work programme?
No, Chairman. Um I think you've you've covered it there. I think um perhaps worth reminding councillors that we are trying to find a a new date for the March meeting. I think you mentioned that in your announcements, in in any case, um to to bring it forward to avoid the pre-election period. But um other than that, um I think that's uh I think you've covered it there.
Okay, fine. Unless anybody wants to make a comment on that information only paper? No? Okay, that's the I'll close the meeting. Thanks, everybody, for your attendance. Um not not good.